This, the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the ISD six twenty-three Roseville Area School Board is called to order. Clark Anderson, call the roll.
Director Bogaszewski.
Here.
Director Goggins.
Here.
Director Clark.
Here.
Chair Johnson.
Here.
Frasier Chu.
Yeah.
Clark Anderson is here.
Are there any agenda adjustments?
There are no agenda adjustments.
Okay. Um, then, Manix, you're up.
Sure, I'd like to read our land acknowledgement. Roseville Area School acknowledges that we reside on traditional ancestral, contemporary and unceded territory of the Dakota people. From Baudelte, a confluence of the Mississippi and Minnesota rivers, a place the Dakota people poetically claim as the center of the earth directly beneath the center of heaven. To Indian Mounds Park, a sacred place of burial, built by ancestors of living people and home to the only known remaining burial mounds within the Minneapolis-St. Paul urban core. Indigenous people have cared for this land. Through warfare, genocide, relocation and removal perpetrated by colonizers, the state of Minnesota and the federal government. Injustices that reduced over a hundred fifty million indigenous people to around three hundred thousand. Indigenous people have given their blood, tears, heart, resilience and love to this land. Enduring boarding schools that were op- in operation from eighteen seventy-nine through the nineteen thirties, where assimilation through humiliation was the curriculum. And unspeakable atrocities occurred daily to foster care systems, where more kids were removed from indigenous homes than any other group in Minnesota. Indigenous people have not lost their culture or identity and still reside on this land. Roseville Area Schools is committed to ensuring the culture of our indigenous relatives, the original and rightful caretakers of this land, is studied, preserved and celebrated. We are committed to understanding and honoring the sovereignty that has been denied to nearly six hundred indigenous nations, including eleven federally recognized tribes in Minnesota. Through the breaking of over four hundred treaties and we are committed to the truth of history of our indigenous relatives, the success of our indigenous students. And to the healing we hope to create through this commitment.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, takes us to summary of community input received for action items. Okay, um, then, that moves us to consent agenda and I would entertain minus, minus retirements.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Okay, retirements.
Thank you. I move with great appreciation the following retirements. Darlene Joyer, a paraprofessional at Falcon Heights Elementary. Ms. Joyer has worked for the district for fourteen years. John Martelli, Nutrition Services Department at Parkview Center School. Mr. Martelli has worked for the district for thirteen years. Nanette Onstad, an English language learner teacher, has been at Falcon Heights Elementary. Ms. Onstad has worked for the district for thirty-two years. If my math is correct, that's fifty-nine total years and we appreciate their service to our school district and I move their retirement.
Okay. It's been moved, um.
A second with great appreciation.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Okay, moving right on. Um, reports and non-action, oh, sorry, thank you, gifts. Director, sorry, Frasier Chu, you get, you have gifts.
That's right. Well, it's with great appreciation that we do this, right? Because we really appreciate our community support. So, um, we have Thomas Bisfiden with a monetary gift to Central Park Elementary School. You caused Black Bart for fifty, uh, for monetary gift to Falcon Heights Elementary School. Uh, you caused Black Bart on behalf of Sarah Richter, a monetary gift to Little Canada Elementary School. Um, we have a monetary gift to the Roseville High School for additional coaching staff. By, uh, the Ross Raider Rights Kick and Jazz Dance Team. We have a monetary gift by St. Paul Kick Incorporated for the dance team also. We have a monetary gift for the football program by Roseville Gymnastic Association to the Roseville Area High School. We have a monetary gift for the volleyball program at the Roseville High School by Brock and Maureen Lindstedt. We have a monetary gift for girls tennis program by F- FMTC RIA custodian Keith Masson for Roseville Area High School. We have a monetary gift for hurl subscription by the Ross Girls Hockey Booster Club to the Roseville Area High School. We have a monetary gift for streaming services, uh, by the Roseville Boys Backcourt Club for the Roseville Area High School. We have a monetary gift for avid programming by Bruce Saber to the Roseville Area High School. We have a monetary gift, uh, for jerseys and hurl subscription by the Ross Boys Lacrosse to the Roseville Area High School. We have a monetary gift for maintenance supplies for baseball field by the Ross Bullpen Baseball Booster Club to the Roseville Area High School. And finally, we have a monetary gift for the middle school robotics by Ahmed Salem and Saimat El-Sayyad for the Roseville Area Middle School. So, so appreciative of all these gifts. I am.
Thank you, yes, uh, it, it goes without saying, um, but we get to say it every time. It, it's, we, we can't do this work, um, without, um, all the generous, um, people that give things, their, their time and the treasure, um, to Roseville Area Schools. So, so again, thank you. Okay, now, we're going to go to reports and non-action items and we're going to start off with our safety and security update. Assistant Superintendent Melissa Sonic, Assistant Principal Lee Tao and Officer Warsami, welcome to the board table.
All right, good evening. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to share an update on safety and security and Roseville Area Schools, as well as our collaboration with the Roseville Police Department and school resource officers. We'll start with some introductions, I'm a familiar face, I'm Melissa Sonic, I get to be the Assistant Superintendent for Roseville Area School. I have two colleagues with me and I'll let them both introduce themselves.
Good morning Chair Johnson and board members and Dr. Lick, my name is Lee Tao, I'm one of the associate principal at Roseville Area High School.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Officer Warsami with the Roseville Police Department, I'm the school resource officer this year at Roseville Area High School.
All right, so, uh, I want to start us off by just grounding us in how our, this evening's board report connects to our strategic plan. Uh, most specifically, it connects to goal one, which states deliver a challenging, joyful and keyword safe learning environment. Uh, there's been a significant focus in safety this fall due to some critical incidents that took place at Ras involving guns. And I just thought I would ground us all, um, the board and the community, uh, in around, like, reviewing a timeline of what took place. Uh, so, back in September twenty-fifth, there were two separate incidents involving guns. There was another on October twenty-fourth. Uh, we took, uh, a significant amount of time in October to review these critical incidents with different stakeholders across our district. On November fourteenth, there was a safety update for the school board. And then on November fifteenth, we hosted a community safety meeting, um, this work is ongoing. Uh, in, in January or February, there'll also be another community safety conversation that we'll be hosting as well. Uh, last week, we also met with principals and administrators. Uh, we shared out building level critical incident review discussions that took place at each of our schools. The way that I've kind of phrased this is we need everybody's heads and hearts, um, around this problem. We took a look at some stakeholder feedback and really synthesized recommendations that we'll be bringing to the district safety and security team on January third. So I want to be very transparent that we continue to prioritize safety. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Lee to talk a little bit more about our district safety and security team.
All right, so an important work, uh, an important group in this work is our district safety and security team, or also often referred to as D S S T. Um, Officer Warsami and I, we serve on the D S S T with Assistant Supercent- uh, Superintendent Sonic. So what is the purpose of the district safety and security team? Purpose of the district safety and security team is to keep our schools safe and secure and to create alignment and support for site-based school safety. So who is on the district safety and security team? So the district safety and security team meets regularly four times, uh, a year and serves as an advisory committee. It is made up a diverse group of stakeholders, as you see here, including parents, teachers, counselors, nurses, administrators, community members and local agencies. In addition to the district security and, uh, safety and security team, each building has an emergency response team or ERT. Uh, that meets regularly to discuss and review safety protocols. Uh, I oversee the ERT at Ras, uh, and I will hand it back to Assistant Superintendent Sonic.
All right, thank you, Lee. Uh, as many of you have heard, we have a two-pronged approach, uh, to how we approach safety. Um, one is traditional safety and security and the other is around violence prevention. So I'll share like a, a brief overview of each of those two categories. So traditional safety and security really starts with our district safety and security team. Uh, the D S S T really serves as an umbrella, uh, for school building emergency response teams. We also have a district crisis consultation and support team. Um, the primary function of that team is a little bit different. Uh, the primary function is to provide consultation and support district-wide in the event of a crisis using the day of crisis checklist. Uh, traditional safety and security also focuses on some of the things that you see listed here. For example, each school has safety plans that are updated each fall. Uh, the standard response protocols that were introduced this year include new practices for lockdowns. You may see them on people's, um, badges around the district like this. Uh, they include different protocols, including hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate and shelter. Uh, the purpose of a hold can be for a medical emergency or a fight, but it can also be for a need for privacy, um, as well. Uh, a secure is used when there is a threat outside the building and a lockdown is used when there is an active threat inside the building. A traditional safety and security also includes some things like secure entrances, partnerships with law enforcement and lockdown buttons in each office and more. We'll transition to talking about violence prevention. Uh, the premise of the Violence Prevention Project is the road to violence is long, so let's build more off-ramps. The Violence Prevention Project, um, to just briefly summarize, is a, it's a research center that is a nonpartisan nonprofit dedicated to reducing violence through research that is both accessible and really geared towards action. So they are interested in partnering with schools, which we have, um, previously and will continue to do so. Uh, violence prevention focuses on things like you see here, like social and emotional learning. And that is teaching students about things like self-awareness, self-management, um, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. So it's really intervening, um, not to the point where something has happened, but five steps ahead of that, right? Uh, it also includes screening for social and emotional behaviors. It includes anonymous reporting systems like the See It Here It Report It forum at Ras and the Stop It app, which, um, both my colleagues here with me are both familiar with. Uh, violence prevention also really starts with trusting relationships with students and staff and administrators. Violence prevention, uh, for us also included a six-part training for principals and administrators on violence prevention. And includes things like crisis prevention, response and de-escalating situations. Uh, another focus in this area that is, um, new this year is Project Hope. Uh, Project Hope is an alternative for alternate forty-five day placement, um, that can serve as an intervention to support students to getting back on track. Um, Project Hope is an alternative to expulsion. Um, it serves individual students, um, and there's a lot of adult support that ranges from counselors to social workers, um, s- uh, student support supervisors, cultural liaisons, teachers and more. So it's really wrapping our arms around a student to help them return to their school community. Um, with that, I also want to touch on what is new, um, with safety and security. There's some additional things that we're exploring so we can take action. Um, I'll highlight just a few of them this evening. We are investigating emergent AI and started the state-of-the-art technologies that detect guns. This is being done in partnership with the Roseville Police Department and as we learn more, I'll share more. Um, we're continuing to work with community partnerships like North, Northeast Youth and Family Services who provide counseling to students. We're also partnering with an organization called Be Smart that focuses on safe gun storage. Um, our school resource officer contracts have been approved and as of December fourth, we have school resource officers in buildings daily at both Ras and Rams. Uh, we also recently hired an evening, um, facility and security manager at Ras. And Ras also implemented color-coded passes to ensure that students are in the area of the school building that they are supposed to be. Uh, we've also added flashing blue lights at Ras to note when an announcement is happening so that students and staff know then when to listen. And this will be happening across the district from my understanding. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we implemented our standard response protocols. Um, we're communicating now with families around safety bi-weekly, so that goes out two times a month. And all of this information is on our district safety and security webpage that is live, um, and that houses all of this information for folks to go back to. Um, before I turn it over to Officer Warsami, I just also want to note, like, there are no quick fixes to, um, system social problems. And so, the analogy that I continue to go back to is think of these kind of like layers of the layers of security and, safety and security and violence prevention and these new areas of focus, think of it like Swiss cheese, right? If you layer them on top of each other, the holes start to get covered up. And layering imperfect solutions holistically is really the best way to prevent violence. So with that context, I will turn it over to Officer Warsami to talk more about school resource officers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Assistant Superintendent Sonic mentioned, uh, over at the high school, at Roseville Area High School. My partner Officer Hallgren, who's not here tonight, is over at Ro- Roseville Area Middle School. And between us two, we also provide coverage for the elementary schools in our district. Uh, tonight, I'm going to talk about our role and how we, what our role is inside the schools and how we spend our time in the schools. Uh, so I'll share an overview of, uh, of the resources that we provide and how we connect and with families, students and staff. Uh, some of the resources, uh, we connect, uh, we have is mental health services, uh, mental health support. Uh, in collaboration with the school, we provide social workers, school psychologists, uh, with resources that the city provides and the county provides. So we have, uh, in-county resources that housed in the city of Roseville that we can help provide, uh, to, uh, psychologists and counselors and social workers. Uh, we also focus on building positive and trusting relationship with students, families, uh, and based on that, we receive information sometimes before incidents arise that requires our involvement. Uh, SROs also serve as educators and liaison to families. We assist and share resources with, uh, families on issues and, that they might be facing, interacting with child protection services, uh, or outside issues, issues outside the school. Uh, we continue that support all year long, uh, whether it's holidays, whether it's during the summer. We're able to connect with families and provide them their resources that we have when, within our city and with the entire county. Uh, we also coordinate responding, collaborate with administrative, uh, about safety concerns. Uh, we work as a team to, with the district, with school administrators, uh, and provide that when we do have safety issues, we connect and we figure out a plan on how to deal with that issue. Uh, I will go over some of our day-to-day, what, what I like to do. Uh, I like during passing times, I like to connect with students and we do that by being out in the hallways as much as possible, uh, being visible. Uh, during passing times, during lunches, during arrival and dismissal, we try to be out there, try to build that positive relationship and connect with the kids. Uh, throughout the years, we have also did some avid mentoring, uh, which I'll be continuing that this year. The relation that we built in schools transfers and over to calls for service outside of school. So let's say we have a runaway or we respond to a family, uh, mental health crisis that a student or a family member might be dealing with. We're able to connect with the kid from our previous relationship. We're also able to share information with patrol officers that are not SROs and help de-escalate situations. Uh, so that relationship is very crucial. We, as Superintendent Sonic said, and we also serve on the district, uh, emergency respond team. We help and support the school and the food shelves, we provide, whether it's clothing, whether it's supplies or whatever this, uh, s- uh, school shelf needs, we provide that to them. Uh, one thing we do, we collect through the entire city, so whether it's, uh, cities providing food and we're collecting that and then we're providing that to the school, uh, shelves. We lead school activities like Raiders Against Destructive Decisions, we host breaking down barriers at Rams and at the police department. So not just getting to know, uh, those, uh, SROs, getting to know our entire department. So one, even if we're not there at a call, y- you get to see our partners, you get to interact with them. That way, we, you know the entire, uh, department. We do guest speakers in classes such as, uh, Career Day, we talk about law enforcement, different, uh, opportunities in law enforcement. We step into health class, uh, give, uh, the risk of vaping, underage drinking and just educate students on that. Uh, one thing is we also provide welfare checks. So if a counselor or a school psychologist is concerned about a student, a family member, uh, somebody that, they don't have to live in our city, if they're outside of our city, we're able to contact another agency uh, to provide, uh, that support and connect kids and make sure we check on them. We have, not only do we have, uh, children crisis, we also have resources for adults. So whether it's a parent, whether it's a staff member, we're a, we're able to provide their resources and provide that help outside of school. So that's just one way we're able to make that connection go smoothly. We also collaborate with staff, uh, provide professional advice, whether it's, the staff is not sure whether to call nine-one-one on an incident or, uh, what to do next, we provide that professional opinion. We coordinate with other law enforcement and first responders to minimize interruptions in the, uh, of the learning environment when response is necessary. So if we have to call nine-one-one for a health or a safety concern, we all know first responders, police, fire medics, if you call nine-one-one, everybody wants to come and help. Uh, throughout the city, throughout the county. Sometimes that might create a scene and distract them for, distraction for all the kids. Uh, so one way is we collaborate with the school administrators, we collaborate with, uh, uh, safety, our safety team at the district and figure out what we need and where we need them. That way, we can, I can relay that information and connect with other agencies to provide, uh, exactly what we need and where we need them. Uh, when first responders show up, they need a task, we're able to provide that and make that go very smooth. Uh, we participate in providing educational conversations to parents, to, uh, students to prevent further criminal conduct. So let's say a student's involved in something, we understand that students make mistakes. Sometimes providing parents, sitting down with the parent and providing that, uh, educational advice to them of where, uh, a certain behavior might lead to in the future. Uh, that's something that we do. Uh, we also provide constant and necessary updates in criminal investigation if we're able to, that's going on, if it's involving maybe, uh, staff, a parent, a student. Uh, we're able to sit down with school administration, provide that. Uh, we're also able to provide information or resources, uh, that the police department has, that the county has. Uh, at the Roseville Police Department, we have, we have housing navigators, we have, uh, children and adult mental health crisis teams. Uh, so we have somebody that's able to work with adults and ju- uh, children. We also provide security at events, at prom, at football games, at any school event. Officers are, we provide one-on-one whether, uh, advice to students throughout the day. Students that are interested in law enforcement or any other career, we provide that one-on-one advice to those that are interested. We also make, uh, assessments, uh, and reports to child protection. We conduct threat assessment, we consult in making decisions about the best avenues for students that are under the influence of drugs or alcohol at school. Sometimes, most of these are like, they show up to an event, they show up to, uh, a football game, uh, with alcohol. And their system, we're able to provide that and connect with, uh, parents and figure out a solution, uh, from there. Uh, we're on scene to provide, uh, to respond immediately to emergencies, whether it's, uh, health issue, whether it's a safety concern, we're there at the scene and able to, uh, coordinate a response. Uh, we're also able to share necessary information about anything that happens in our community. Uh, uh, big calls that come out, we're able to share that information with school staff. And any information that might involve a student outside of school, we're able to share that with a staff member, with administration.
With that, thank you, we'll open it up for, um, questions and comments. Thank you.
All right, Mike. A bunch of them. Um, I think the first one, just on the, well, thank you for the presentation, first of all, I think it's good. And thank Officer Warsami for coming, I know, you know, it's just another part of your day that you're devoting to the school district for, so thank you for that. The, uh, the, the D S S T, the District Safety and Security Team, the, the parents, the family members, the community members that are part of that, how, how are they chosen or selected? Or is there a limit to the number? Cause I know there may be a lot of people who'd love to be on that, but maybe not, I don't know, so let me just talk about that a little bit.
Right, I can speak to that, what I'm hearing you ask is as around, how do we build up that team? One thing that's nice is once, um, people become a part of the district safety and security time, team, often there's interest in continuing to serve. So we have some returning members. Um, if we go back to the slide that has the different stakeholders, we try to make sure that we have lots of different perspectives. Um, so if we, for example, we had many students that were on the committee, or the team last year that then graduated. So when that happens, then we have to actively recruit and so that's a partnership with Ras. We will reach out to different, um, students in the school to try to, like, recruit more students. We also send out communication each fall, um, carry supports with that to all of our families around district safety and security. And we invite anyone who's interested in being a part of the committee to reach out to me. Um, and then if we find like, oh, okay, we've got lots of representation of like students and, um, staff, but we're really missing some, maybe, um, teacher perspective or a counselor or a nurse, then we'll recruit people who might be missing from the team. Um, we also want our district safety and security team to, um, reflect our, um, demographics and so we recruit in that way too. So some of it's by invitation, some of it's by recruitment, but if anyone is interested in serving on the district safety and security team, I encourage them to reach out to me. I also thank, um, Todd Anderson for his role, um, he is an active member of that group as well.
Thank you. Um, second question was about the, one of the violence prevention issues or endeavors.
Mm-hmm.
The social and emotional learning and the screening for social and emotional behaviors. You know, I, I assume you're not screening like every kid, but how, how does it work? Like, are individual students identified or, or, or kind of seem to be at risk for doing something? Then you kind of invite them to participate in then maybe a conversation, like, how does it work? Cause it's so nuanced, I could see there could be resistance to or denial, if a kid might need help, they might not want to admit it.
Right.
How do you, how do you do that?
So this is new this year, right? And it, the last chapter of, uh, the, the book, The Violence Project is really, is called Hope. And one of the strategies they talk about specifically is social and emotional learning and they talk about how, you know, we screen kids for vision and hearing, why aren't we screening for risk? And one way they, they suggest to screen for it is actually, um, through physicians, like in doctors' offices, right? So like, there's another, like, societal lens to this as well. And this was something that was taken up with, um, our district, our, some of our, um, school psychologists have played an important role in this. I know Director Thomas and Director Vonda Lindby have been a part of this. Um, we decided not to roll out case six because of the heavy lift at elementary this year, so I believe it's being piloted in three-six this year.
Some in schools.
Some schools, um, and it's, they're using a system called My Sabers. Um, and so that is a screening, but then what it does is that information, from my understanding, it kicks to our, like, a school team and they're doing an analysis around like what supports might need. So it might not be like a conversation with a sixth grader of like, hey, we noticed that you, like, on this assessment, right, this came up. It may be a more like, um, discreet conversation of like, hey, we just wanted to check in, what's going on, how are things going for you? Um, so that's one way to do it. And then at the high school, it is brand new, I believe it started in November, do you want to talk a little bit about that screening risk?
Yeah, so last year, um, we've got a collaborative team that started, uh, piloting last year called, a program called Son to Grow, uh, which this year, we're doing it for the whole entire school. Uh, and, um, our teachers, um, implemented the que- the question, the survey to our students, um, late, middle to late, uh, November. And that, what that does is then to our students um late, middle to late uh November, and that, what that does is then it helps us also identify students and the type of level or support that they need. Uh, the collaborative team um that is involved in this is our nurse, our social worker, our both our school psychologists, um and um, you know, one of our media specialists, uh and they, they kind of handle this and, you know, introduce it to our staff and tell her, direct our staff on, 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 on how to administer this and what to look for and things like that.
Just two more questions. That kind of segues maybe the next one, it's maybe even for Officer Rosami. Well, comment first, uh as you may know, uh a couple of years ago, this was a, a big discussion, the whole SRO concept. And I think that what the board on record believed is that we do see it as a way to, like you were saying earlier, to intervene and help prevent escalation to, to a further state of, of risk or or behaviors that, that then could get a kid in, in big trouble. So I think it's, it's a great program here. I'm just curious, how, how does that come out just in terms of numbers? Do, do you often talk with a student about certain things? Is it like one a day, three a day, one a week, two a month? I'm just curious as to how often you in your role are, are kind of called in to just say, hey, can you have a chat with this kid? We think something's going on here.
Not often. Some of the stuff that we talk to students or we talk to parents about and we sit down with them are usually very like minor issues, nothing that would uh constitute at that level to be severe. So we're, we're not sitting down with parents very often, uh maybe once in a week or once in a month, I'm sitting down with a parent or I'm sitting down. Uh, just cannot put a number to it, cause
Yeah, yeah.
it's not always that we're sitting down with a parent or there's issues that arise, so just whenever it does come up, depending on what the issue is, depending on uh who's involved, we go on from there and making a decision on where to move on from.
Thank you. And then, that's all obviously done in conjunction with school leadership.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so everybody knows what's going on and all that kind of stuff. Um, my final question, I actually got a, a, a quick other question. I'm just curious as about you and how, how you're doing this role, like, did you how were you assigned this from the, from the local department? Is this something you really wanted to do, or did they tap you on the shoulder and say, you're stuck, you gotta go over there?
It's something that I wanted to do. Uh, I knew I wanted to, one of the reasons I became a officer was, we had a, I went, I attended Southwest High School in Southwest Minneapolis, and we had an SRO in the building. And just seeing that connection he had with students, uh every day being in the hallway talking to us, uh and just building that relationship with us and talking to us about careers in law enforcement is the reason why I wanted to be a police officer. Uh, after college, I had an officer from the Roseville Police Department come talk to our college class, which got me interested in Roseville. Uh, when I started working as a police officer, that's when I learned about our school resource officer position here within the city. Uh, I wanted to do the position a year and a half ago, uh when it first opened up, but I wanted a little bit more experience on the street, that's why I didn't put in for it. But when the position became available, again, I couldn't miss the opportunity, so I put my hat in and really wanted to do it.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate that. I think it's key that you want to do that. My, my final question. Reserving the right to have more occur to me later on. Uh, it's, it's actually for, since Director Sonic, um, the, the emerging state-of-the-art stuff that you're exploring, so thank you, I applaud that, and I know a number of community folks have expressed interest in that, but what you're talking about to just be obvious, cause I don't know, I don't know, you know, some of these words are vague to me. It's, it's like the next generation of like metal detectors and stuff like that, like actual hard technology, or are we looking at different, I'm just curious?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, so this was new learning for me this two, this year too. Um, it really, it's emerging, it is state-of-the-art. I do think it's the way of the future. But it's so new that it's still kind of glitchy and like in development. So for example, one of the systems that we looked at um actually works with your camera system. Um, and then it would scan using artificial intelligence um to detect a weapon, but there are strengths and weaknesses to it. So for example, is it brandished, is it not? So um, I explored that one with Sergeant Detective Lopez, and we were kind of looking at like what would be a, what, what is a good fit based on what we're learning. Um, and then another one that is a, like, more of like it hooks on top, is a perimeter scanner um using like radars, um but again, that one is really new and the price point is um, I would say not attainable for any school district. And so we're looking at like what are funding streams, what are grants we can explore, so looking at different technologies and then pros and cons of each. It's moving away from metal detectors, um because of some of the research of how metal detectors can be circumvented. Um, yeah, also what I was more drawn to about some of these that there, is that they're more discreet. Then you're passing through something that, you know, feels like a metal detector, but we just haven't found anything that is quite the right fit, and I attended the last session last week, so.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, grants and funding may be necessary, might even be we're a beta testing site or something for a company, maybe not alpha, you don't want to be bleeding edge, but you know, maybe bleeding edge, so. Any thoughts on timeline and how quickly that assessment will proceed, or looking at like through the rest of the school year? I'm just curious as to what we might expect back a you know, like, maybe report's too strong of a word, but some thinking or opinions on what?
Some updates. Uh, I would say I've spent, I've attended two different sessions, maybe three in the last month. Um, and then next week, we'll be exploring grants a little bit more, so hopefully this year, and then we'll be maybe at the mercy of some of the grant timelines, but I would say like, it's going to take some time. I also want to be incredibly thoughtful about where we put our time and energy, like time is a limited resource, and so I'll be meeting with the District Safety and Security Team to get some more guidance there. We have some recommendations that were um collected from administrators last week, so that is kind of the next step, and then I'll start a community meeting in January.
Thank you. Thanks.
Todd? I want to say thank you for this report. You know, every single committee I've been on, I mean, they're all great, they're all comprehensive, there's wealth of experience, but this, this, I, I, I can attest to my school board colleagues that I I genuinely think this is arguably one of the most comprehensive and collaborative groups to be on, the DSST. I, I am the, the wealth of experience of, and, and, and partners and the partnerships that are at the table, and the student voice is, you know, directly asking students about anonymous reporting systems, are they working, the apps? Are they working? I mean, we're getting direct feedback and they're not shy about sharing. I just, you know, it's, it's a fantastic uh group to be with, and and I want to thank Officer, you know, Rosami too, even though we had a period where we, you know, we didn't have SROs in the schools, I want to thank the Roseville Police Department and, you know, you for being there. You were there for these critical gun incidents. I want to make sure the committee understands that, that they didn't leave, they're at the table, they're there helping us out through these incidents, so I, I really want to thank you for that. Uh, I like this idea, this, this evening facility and security manager at RAS. It sounds really cool, I like that. I guess I just wanted maybe to flesh it out a bit more. You know, I guess you know, who, who do they report to? Is it Principal Wilson? Um, what do they have like authority to do? Is it going to be a cell phone or like a walkie-talkie they can call the police department or just maybe flesh it out just a tad more, but I, I think it's a really great idea. Um, you know, we were still fleshing it out, but I'm just curious, you could expand on it a little bit more.
My understanding is that it was a partnership with um Dr. Aronson and Dr. Wilson around hiring the evening um security facility manager. I believe they report to Dr. Wilson?
Yep.
All right, like I said it with a question mark and looked at the name to confirm.
Dr. Wilson and the admin team, so. Yep. Um, the position was built to carry through, right, expectations from the school day into the evening, create a welcoming environment for all, but then I know that safety is always a concern too, so just that continuation.
Lee, if you want to add?
No, I, I think this evening um manage, security manager, um we've hired a pretty good one, one that knows our students already. Um, that was a former, um in a former security role. Um, so it, it's great that, you know, she's there already running, knowing the kids, kids loved her and you know, they all, her first day was yesterday, and so they all came back and they're like, they're so surprised to see her, so it's great to already have that established relationship.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, as echoed by my colleagues here, really appreciate you being here. So I have a question from the safety forum, and just kind of explain the process. I know we have another community forum maybe in January, February, and there were some concerns that were raised at the when was that? Oh my goodness, November?
November fifteenth.
November, thank you. November. So, um, are there anything from that meeting where some of that input had been taken into account in terms of um some of the new, new things that we're doing? So if you can explain more about that.
Yeah, I know there's been a lot of conversation at RAS with the RAS administrative team. I have, um, I can picture in my head kind of my laundry list of things that I've been checking in with Dr. Wilson, as one around like bathrooms. Bathroom sweeps, the changing in, um, the hall passes was one element. Vaping, lots of conversations around vaping in meetings with different parents, different organizations, um to really look at what can we do like both proactively and reactively um to address both bathrooms and vaping. Also, I want to say too, like, that's not a problem that's unique to um Roseville. Um, I think that's statewide and nationwide. I have a high school senior who goes to a different school and asked him, I'm like, get vape at school? He's like, every day. I was like, okay, so it's not just us. Uh, like, and like, we have to collectively work together to solve the problems. I don't know if you want to add any more thing about, about how RAS admin team has been processed around that?
Yeah, I think as an admin team and even as a student support team, I think we've worked around some of the common themes that we heard uh during the community forum. And we worked, we're, and we're working um really hard to try to um uh tackle some of those issues, and I think one of the biggest things was the bathroom and the vaping in the bathroom, and be very, just very intentional about um, um, you know, going around it, checking, make sure that students are where they need to be, and then also the new passes that we implemented this trimester really helps the, not just us, but the other staff to know that, hey, this student is coloring, uh carrying around a red uh, a red pass, which is, you know, an A wing, but they're in E wing, which is totally different. And so, you know, we always ask them of like, hey, like, what's your business over here? And oftentimes, you know, like, sometimes it could be that they're over there because that's the only place for the single-cell bathrooms. And so that's a legitimate quest, uh, uh, response, but other times then we would help the students point them where, hey, you passed a couple bathrooms here and and then again, just always doing the, our, our normal um sweeps of our areas, every administrator and student support team, we always have our area of that we um ensure that students are, you know, where, where we're gently pushing students to cla- to the classroom and everything. And I think the overall feedback that we've got from staff this year is, is that um, the, the hallways are a lot better, kids are in, in the um in the class a little bit more, and as evidenced by our uh trimester one data with our absences and our tardies have gone down dramatically.
The last thing I'll say about vapes too is, I think it's about getting to the root cause. Right? Like if we're, if we're at the point where we've got to vape at school, like there are five steps that we've like missed for intervention before that. So I think it's about education, um, it's about communicating with families. I'm also working with um our police department and working with, we collaborated with another city where there was a vape shop selling vapes to minors, right? So like, this is like a problem that's going to take everybody to be um a part of the solution.
No, thank you for that, because I wanted to make sure that we are responsive to the community. And I can see that some of the SARS, I just wanted to do like really expand on that, so really appreciate that response. Cause I, I think, um, I mean, and, and the tier of the data, right, we want to continue to collect data and say, because of this new things, what, what happened? How the data uh kind of proves to be that this is working, right? So this intervention, new ways of doing things are actually working, so really appreciate the, the innovative way of thinking about this and really keeping, keeping all those, all those concerns in mind, so really, really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, once again, as my colleagues said, I appreciate that you all been here, appreciate what you and your colleagues do. Many of my colleagues have asked many of my questions. One, I know communication was a big issue at the community meeting, maybe um Assistant Superintendent Sonic, maybe to communicate with the public again about our requirements with FERPA, the Minnesota Data Privacy Act, what we cannot share. I know that often comes up a lot that people want more information than sometime we can share, maybe if you can ask.
Right, so actually that is something that um Carrie is working on and Dr. Lake, and myself about, and the whole cabinet has actually been a part of sharing and communication with families around um the Family Educational Rights Privacy Act and what we can and cannot share. I would also direct people to policy five-eight-four, which is our data collection and maintenance policy. The actual policy out we're facing is just a couple of paragraphs. Um, but if you look at the regulations, it's a twenty-page document around what we can re- and cannot release, and so we are really bound by federal and state privacy acts around what we can and cannot share. And really like the, it just, to summarize it best is um, we can share information with a student's family. Um, but outside of that, like the only people that we can communicate directly about a student about is their own family. We cannot communicate that with other, other um families or widely to the district, um to our um district community as well. What was different about the situation at RAS is there were pu- um public charges that were pressed. And so a lot of that private data became public, so that was what was unique. Um, and why we were able to communicate a little bit more freely, but we do have a communication that will be going out to families around what to expect um in our communication, and then we'll also like add that, a, a, a portion of that to the district safety and security webpage, so we can refer back to it as well.
Thank you. Kitty?
Thank you, uh, appreciate you being here and appreciate all the work that's being done. I mean, I know this has been a focus for a long time and you've been working on it very diligently, but appreciate also that you're taking the response and trying to figure out, um, take the ideas and the issues brought up and really looking to what we can do differently. Uh, one of the questions I was having uh was around the violence prevention work. How much of that is really defined at this point, or how much is still kind of in development that we're trying to keep in touch with as they become more knowledgeable?
Hmm, that's a good question. I think the things that are currently, eh, part of where this came from is the District Safety and Security Team, so some folks may remember Dr. James Densley from The Violence Project came out and spoke to us, our, like, three years ago. Um, we did a book study around The Violence Project, and then we created a subcommittee, and that subcommittee is where we really got traction for some of the work around The Violence Project. So the things that you saw listed there tonight, those are things that are in action. Um, but I also, uh, they've been very generous with their time, um, and so I've taken them up on that on a yearly basis. I meet with Dr. James Densley, and I basically share here's everything that we're doing, what are we missing? What is emerging? What are you learning? Like, where can we do better in terms of safety and security? So it's that ongoing partnership. Um, he was very generous last time we met, he was like, it doesn't just have to be once a year, it can be every once in a while, so um, we're just doing a, a good job of keeping that relationship going and staying in touch and continuing to share, like, here's what we're doing, and if there's something we're missing, we want to know. Like, we want to do right by our kids. Uh, I've said many times, like, every child that walks into our school is somebody, somebody, um, and that's the same for staff too, so we have to do our due diligence in, when it comes to safety and security. And what's fascinating is when there's, you know, um, things on a national level, I'll see these same folks on like the different news channels like CNN and NBC, and I'm like, well, I'm glad we're talking to the people that, you know, other folks go to as experts as well.
You've been in partnership with The Violence Project from one of the early school districts, was that not the case?
Yep, for now three years. This is my third year in this, uh, third year in this role, and I started with, as I, as I started into this role, that partnership began as well.
Thank you for all that work.
Okay, um, I only have two things. One, you know, I'm a, a big fan of The Violence Project, and I, I want to thank you for your continued work um with that. I think it's a, a, a great group, and I think we're I think we're, I know we're better for it, um, so. Also, I'd like to thank all of you for, for coming today, um, lots of great information. Officer Rosami, I want to specifically thank you um for, for taking the time to, to talk about all the things that you do eh, at, at, at RAS, and as, as a board member, a lot of that information we already have, okay, but, but to be honest, most people don't know that uh all the things, you know, literally the laundry list of things that um you do and can be doing at RAS every day, so so, so thank you for taking the time to do that and, and express that, um, and for doing that work, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um. Next up, um, early childhood program report.
Welcome.
Welcome to the table.
Good evening, we're excited to be here tonight. Talk about early learning programs, our collaborations, our alignment, and our successes. We'll start with introductions. our alignment and our successes. We'll start with introductions. I'm Cindy Anderson, the Director of Community Education.
I'm Tammy Reese, Early Childhood Program Supervisor.
I'm Heidi Stone. I'm the Early Childhood Special Education Supervisor.
Hi, Jen Krueger, Assistant Director of Student Services.
Good evening. Nice to meet you. I'm Ms. Director of Student Services for Roseville Area Schools. This evening, the presentation that you're about to see will connect with goal one of the strategic plan, which is around, you know, ensuring students are college and career ready. And we start that at the youngest of ages. And we will talk about how we deliver a challenging, joyful and safe environment for our young learners.
So the first thing we'll see is a video. We're really excited to share this video with you. It really highlights the variety of programming we have in early childhood special education, in ECFE, pre-K, screening, our early childhood umbrella. And it really shows some of the ways we collaborate and how we align with the K-12 ELA curriculum.
You've also received an infographic and just shows a picture in numbers kind of of our programs. So we'll watch the video and then we'll take a look at the infographic and then we will have time for questions as well.
Here's a video of how it brings to life your programming.
Yes. All right. So now we're going to look at the infographic. We're just going to go through this. We're going to start at the top left and then we'll go through this, the infographic. Yep.
Yep. So I'll go first. So Birth to Two, Early Childhood Special Education, or ECSE, provides an early literacy checklist during home visits. And did you know the ECSE team has school psychologists, speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, a physical therapist, a social worker and a school nurse?
Last year, we had 28 pre-K and ECSE staff trained in letters. And we have three ECFE drop-in and play events are offered each week.
And currently our enrollment numbers as of about December 1st, we had 118 children ages three to five enrolled in Early Childhood Special Ed and 38 in Birth to Two.
Seven of our pre-K classes are COAT classes. Seven of the 19 total are COAT.
And we have a total of 156 children right now with IFSPs or Individualized Family Service Plans, or IEPs, Individualized Education Plans.
This past summer, we served 71 families in our ECFE summer program. One of our most popular programs is the Drop In and Play. And typically, we have over 3,000 participants each year.
I must interrupt. Have you named the difference between ECFE and ECSE just for the community if they're watching?
Sure. Okay. ECFE is Early Childhood Family Education, which is our parent-child education program, birth to kindergarten entry.
And ECSE is Early Childhood Special Education, serving children and families from birth to age five that qualify for services under having a disability.
Thank you both.
All right. Did you know 50% of our pre-K staff speak more than one language? And this includes paras, our admin team and clerical and teachers. All right. We started Hagerty this year. It's a celebration. We typically screen between 550 and 600, 100 students each year. And so we're right about that. Again, 553.
And Birth to Two, you'll hear me mention that, ECSE Birth to Two. That team supports families of infants and toddlers in their homes across the district. That's where their services are provided.
New this past summer, the summer of 2023, we had a nine-week ECFE summer program with 11 different classes, classes offered. We had something every day of the week, Monday through Friday, for families to participate in. And we have three early childhood sites at Harambe, Parkview and Betutetja.
All right. Did you know we use ELA curriculum that align with the K-12 curriculum? Like Hagerty, Sanday and STAR. And it also aligns with letters. And we have two ECSE and pre-K collaborative family events in January and April. And then our final fun fact is ECSE responded to 346 referrals last year.
I'll open it up for questions, comments.
Actually, we're going to go with Kitty this time.
It was very exciting that that many teachers have attended the letters program. Out of how many teachers are we even talking that would use that kind of material eventually?
Okay.
Is it most?
Yeah, I would say we have 13 in early childhood and probably that many.
Probably eight, I think.
Close to the 28.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So along with our speech pathologists that are using it in their speech classes as well.
And is it as big a change for preschool or early childhood as is at the elementary school? Or is it larger? I mean, how much does it impact what you do?
Using the curriculum? I would say it's really provided a, some guidance around what to do. I think our staff have been used to kind of inventing the wheel and figuring out how to target different things. But having the letters knowledge and then given the Hagerty curriculum has really helped guide them and provide them with even little scripts to use during different times of day. So that's been helpful.
And one other question is, when you talk about the numbers with IEPs or IFSPs, I'm not sure what I know, if I know what an IFSP is, but 156 of how many? Is that out of the, like, the 553 you screen each year and then that adds up? Or how does that connect with your other?
It's, it's hard to say. So we, in early childhood, it's different than, let's say, the K-12 world where if you're in an elementary building, you know the total number of students. Whereas we're in, we're talking about the whole Roseville community. So we don't really know. We have the census, you know, we can go on, but we don't quite know how many are out there. But these are just based on how many referrals we've received. We went through 346. So I guess about 156 out of those, almost 350 are now getting services, if that helps.
Yeah. Well, this is just amazing. We're so exciting, the breadth that you're able to offer, how much more you're able to do. And even a few years ago, you just keep building on it. It's so exciting. At such an important age. So thank you very much.
I'm just keying in on those referrals. Just curious, is that up from last year or down or just?
Oh, it keeps, it trends up. I've been tracking. Our enrollment numbers are up. Last year, total enrollment, we had around 175. We're already going to be, as I look ahead to January, end of January, we'll be around 130, 140 students. And then those referrals, I think we're on track, maybe a little low this year, but I think we'll meet by the end of the year around what we were at last year. So I think there's just a lot of need and a lot of families out there looking for help and they're finding us.
Well, I would say every family could use this help. You know, we did, our kids were big. We did ECFE. Our son's 32, our daughter's 26 now. So they're way past it. Every time we've met, years and years, been on the board, I've talked about them because it was such a great program. In fact, when it links to reading, it was really, it's really weird. Everyone has weird moments. A memory unlocked in my brain that I don't think I've ever thought of in my life. And it was me, when I was a little kid like that age, and my mother, when I went grocery shopping with her, would ask me to read the packages as they, as she put them in the cart. It was just something to practice the reading, the letter recognition. Anyway, it's really cool. All right. So first I'm going to ask a horrible question. Do we, is this, is, do we charge fees for this? Is this free for everybody? Is it a sliding scale? What do we do?
I can answer for, first for ECFE, it is a sliding scale and we wouldn't, we never turn anyone away if they, they aren't able to pay. We also feel that it's really important to offer some things that are free. So our drop-in and play classes that we mentioned are free and there's no registration. I think it's part of the reason why we see the numbers that we do because it's, it just, we're just trying to, you know, reduce barriers as much as we can. For pre-K, we also, I mean, it's fee-based, but we have six different funding sources. So there are over, probably about 60% are on, have a scholarship, 100% scholarship. And then we also have a sliding fee for pre-K as well.
So given all of that, and this may be more of a business director question for you, but if you took all this stuff together, is it, are we, are we actually gaining or is it really a service we're providing that's more of investment in the community and investment in our kids?
It's a service we're providing and investment in our community.
And then, given that, are we getting, you think, what the demand is for this in our district? Or are we having to turn people away yet because of lack of staff, lack of resources, anything like that?
Our ECFE program, we, we can always have more people attend. So that works really well. For pre-K right now, we have a few spots and we keep filling them as they open. And really briefly, I just looked before I came here and, because it's ever-changing, you know, the numbers. There's probably about 40 on the waitlist. So we keep trying to move students into classes as quickly as we can.
Well, because I think it's, one, it builds trust in the Roseville School District. If we can allow a family to have their kids come through this program. I think in certain areas, even to link it specifically with certain schools, like I know Harambe is having the enrollment issue. You know, if we break it up by where their, their neighborhood or the choice school might be, that could help if we could make sure we can offer this to every child out there. So I get, you know, again, it's all budget, it's all everything, you know? But at some point, I think it's key, the early reading is key and the social interaction is key. So it's really good. My last question is, and I may have missed this somewhere, who is or was Hagerty?
Hagerty's a curriculum.
Yeah. Is that somebody's name that like invented it somewhere, like some?
We're going to have to look it up.
I'd be curious because I just heard they have, and everybody seems to know what it means, but I just, you don't either. So I guess that's both good and bad, but you know.
Our other curriculums are wit and wisdom, like, I don't know what that one is either.
I can Google it later because we have the source of all, all human knowledge is available to us.
Okay, it is named after a Dr. Hagerty.
Got it. Okay. I'll, I'll dig into it. But otherwise, I'll just, again, no other question. I'm just going to say again, you guys, I love you guys. This is one, you know, there's so many important things we do. This is obviously one of the most important things we do. So thank you for making this happen for all of our families and kids.
Hi, thank you for this work. So back to the curriculum, the Hagerty curriculum, or the latter curriculum by Hagerty, is, is not for special ed students, right? It's general for early childhood?
All students are, are generally students. So it's for all students.
Yeah, okay. So that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing is, what is the demographics of? The other thing is, what is the demographics of our student body for early childhood?
I don't have the specific numbers, but I would say it very much reflects like the K-12 student body. That's important to us as well, that our early childhood classroom should look like all the classrooms in our district.
That is information we can get you, too.
Yes, we can get it.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah, for sure.
And then how do, I think you mentioned it's great to hear that the staff have a lot of, you know, languages represented. I just always interested, what is the staff makeup too? Kind of like, you know, as we know, in Minnesota, there's such a gap, right, between what our families and students look like versus what our teacher body look like. And doing great work, I don't, you know, but it's just kind of like, as we think of the future, what does recruitment look like? How do we make sure that we have teachers that look like our student body too?
Yep.
Thank you for your work. This is great.
Thanks, thank you again. I know before when you talked to us, can you just highlight kind of the benefits of the partnership of the ECFE and the ECSE? The combination of having them together?
Yeah. I can start, yeah. I think it's just really important that it is seamless for families. Like, we have an early childhood program, and we meet a lot of different needs. And we are all working together to provide that. Like, from a family standpoint, I don't, it shouldn't be like siloed, in my opinion. So we're really working to say, we have an early childhood program. We have lots of different things happening to meet your needs, and we'll help you. We'll help you figure out, you know, what you need and walk with you in the journey. Not like you have to go some, to different people or different programs. We're really trying to present it as one early childhood program.
Yeah, and to add to that, too, I think what we're, we've been trying to do this year is, and as we planned for this year, is to ensure that we're building in like professional development time that's overlapping, so that our teams can really get to know what each other do. So for example, you know, Tammy's team has parent educators and ECFE teachers, whereas my team has the home visiting special education team. And so those groups of people can really work together to collaborate, to support families. And so just having them, giving them more built-in time to collaborate and get to know each other and get to know what each team kind of specializes in, I think does help us better support the students and families that we work with.
Okay, well, Manix actually took the question, so well done. First of all, thank you for coming out today. I love these programs. And I, it's really, it's really so cool to see how well they weave together. To the point that I sometimes had to be reminded, no, there actually are two separate programs. And the video was absolutely amazing, so.
Let's just also give a shout-out to Megan Webb for like putting that video together and highlighting all of our programs. We're so lucky to have her. She's a, she's a community ed marketing manager, so.
Okay, well, shout-out to her. That was, I felt like I was back in a classroom, so, you know, with my own kids, so.
Good question. So is that video gonna be on the website?
Yeah, we are going, again, we wanted to highlight it to y'all first, and then we will be able to share it.
Thank you for letting us see it for us.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Shout-out to Ms. Moriarty in the back. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our audit update by Chief Bean Counter Sherri Thompson.
Good evening again. So I just want to give you a quick update as far as our audit goes. All of the testing is done. We are in the process of drafting our statement, so there's a lot of back and forth. Right now, we anticipate we're gonna be very close to the December thirty-first as far as getting our report into the Department of Education. I've had conversations with the Department of Education. We will know for sure in the next couple days, because also in order to, before we can submit to the Department of Education, it has to go through an internal review process, as especially our finance committee is aware. Typically, we have to allow up to a two-week process. It doesn't typically take two weeks, but with the holidays coming. But I just want to ensure you, the testing is done. I feel good about the audit. We will give you an update by the end of the week, I would guess, that we will, we will know. I feel good about where we're at as far as like our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance. I think we had projected about five point seven million dollars. I shared some information during the truth and taxation hearing that I put together last week, I believe. And again, in looking at our strategic plan and our strategy number five as far as resources goes, I believe that we're gonna end June thirtieth at about seven point seven million dollars, which kind of like feeds into the discussion about fund balance and target and the importance of fund balance. And we look at building that again next year. And like I said, there aren't any major issues. I know it's not like last year. The audit with our federal dollars is taking more and more time. That's these bleary eyes, and they're not just mine. We have a great office, our staff in the business office that works hard at this. And it just takes like, takes more time, so. Again, we will let you know, but you will be receiving that and taking action on it in January. I just don't know yet, depending on when we get it, because of the first meeting being earlier. But we will give you an update on that.
I'm sure is I correct that the district finance committee will be meeting in January and looking at enrollment trends and getting to take a deep dive into a fund balance recommendation for the board?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. So yes, that is, we're part of the work of the finance advisory committee. And again, as we've talked in the strategic planning process, not only the importance of those fund balance reserves as far as the future goes, but also our credit rating. So yes, we will be working on that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Well, thank you for that. Stay right there.
It's like, I think I'm up next.
Yes. Except to our action items, finally, final levy certification.
So again, and this also aligns with our strategic plan and our resources. The administration is recommending that the board approve the final levy in the amount of forty-eight million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. And this aligns with the, what was presented at the hearing prior to the regular meeting this evening.
Okay. I entertain that motion.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I was wondering what you have heard from the community? Have we had any input? Any calls, emails, other feedback?
Yeah, thank you. We have not had any feedback on the presentation. And I'll say this now for community members that may be viewing the board meeting. On the presentation is my contact information. Also, individuals sometimes have questions, and I have visited with many community members over the years. I have access to even pull property tax statements. So sometimes I, people have either come in, if there's questions or concerns, people have either come into the office or we've done it over the phone, because it can be confusing even on the property tax statements. But I am definitely willing, available for questions. And again, even if it pertains to their particular parcel, I'm happy to walk through that with them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did want to say thank you for the way you explained it was just very clear, right? Understanding, I feel like I've heard it several times, but this time, I think the visuals help to understand kind of your, how this is all impacting at the individual level. Whether it's the value of the house versus just plain increase. So it just was really well done, so thank you.
Yeah, it can be confusing. You're welcome. Thank you.
So thank you.
Is that on the website already?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, you're not here. That's right, okay, that's good.
Any further discussion? In that case, it's been moved, it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to board reports. So.
I had an opportunity, I had an opportunity, I think it was last week, to attend Brim Hall's November school-wide meeting and recognition program with Director Clark and Superintendent Lake. And what an uplifting, positive event. I think I'm the try-to-go to every single meeting every month now. But it was just, I was remarking to Superintendent Lake, just the positivity and just the way Principal Vernash ran it and gets the kids involved and parents attended in just every single, I think every single grade, there are some students who are recognized for some recognition or honor. Just fantastic. And there's, there's always a certain word or behavior. Every month, there's a certain theme, just, I found it, it was fantastic. I mean, it really set my day.
Standing room only.
Yeah, standing room only. Great trajectory. Even participated in one of the little dances. Did a very good job, but I was thrilled to attend that. And then I had an opportunity to, in Rose's, in Director Chu's place, attended Ramsey County League of Local Governments, their last board meeting of the year. You know, they discussed some budgets for the upcoming year. They passed their twenty-twenty-four strategic plan. That was important, discussing their purpose statement, their mission, their vision, their values. They work on one-year strategic plans. That was interesting, so they can stay nimble. But that passed, and they had new officer elections. And then they did, and I know it has, it has already come and gone, but they did discuss the annual dinner and program, which I think you're gonna remark on. But I was happy to attend. And also, yeah, January twelfth, they are gonna have an important program with state legislators to go over the upcoming legislative session, legislative session, so that's it.
I had a chance to attend the finance committee meeting. Just a couple of highlights that I wanted to mention. One was around COVID funds. We do have forty-five full-time equivalents who are being still paid out of that funds, such as nurses, et cetera. And we'll need to look at, you know, shifting them back to the general fund or how we're going to review each area, basically. And even substitute teacher costs, we've had a million dollars contributed from that fund. And so there is going to be some real bumps up in our costs as we no longer have those resources. We will meet our deadline of spending all the dollars by June. That did not appear to be an issue. The other thing that I particularly wanted to mention is the group talked about enrollment. And there was one piece of information that I, they provided us a spreadsheet, and I know any member of the board who would like to get it certainly can, where you can input different district numbers, and you can look at our neighbors' districts, for example, and where people are coming from, et cetera. But the one factoid I thought it was worth making sure you guys knew was that if you look at all districts where at least ten of our students go to, so all receiving districts, we always receive more students from those districts coming here than go from our district to their district, which was surprising to me. When you hear a lot of the common thoughts around Mounds View and how we have students going to Mounds View, the fact that we have sixty-four students who are going to Mounds View from here, but there are a hundred and five students from Mounds View that come to our district. And in some cases, it's, it's like in St. Paul, we have three times as many students come to our district than go to St. Paul. But with open enrollment, the, going to other districts is a smaller portion. Predominantly, it's from going to charter schools that offer something different or unique that that family is looking for. So that was, that was really valuable to understand. Are you going to be talking about the AMSD at all?
You can.
Oh, okay. All right. I know that.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, no, yes.
You will be talking it?
I am.
Perfect. I had a chance to watch the video after you recommended it, and it was excellent. I will look forward to hearing your comments on it.
Um, Rose?
So I was at that finance committee or finance advisory committee. It was great, such engagement from our community members. So very grateful to be, to have that committee. I was also at the community advisory group. That was a Zoom meeting this time. And it was very engaging. And one of the, one of the effort that was happening is to understand who are the different businesses and nonprofit churches or other, other groups that actually have connection to Roseville? And the more you think about it, it's like, wow, that's, that's a lot. So when you start talking about having that all documented, you get a sense of how involved our community is. So it really is a great kind of activity, right? As to kind of think about where we are at, and then where, maybe where are the places that we could do more? And where are the places where we don't know that is happening and we want to document that? So I thought that's such a, that's such a great action item as an advisory committee to say, yeah, let's figure out who are all the partners for our district. And it's amazing. To me, it's just absolutely amazing. So it's a great endeavor that is going on. So I think people are jazzed about that. People are really jazzed about that, because it really shows, right? Wow. And then, and then all of a sudden, we also talk about how do we acknowledge all the donors? All the people who donate money? And so now there's a sense that, oh, we do actually acknowledge that in our, you know, school board meeting. But how do we collect them all so that we can see the comprehensiveness? And maybe consider events to acknowledge that? Acknowledge partnerships, acknowledge donors, like just ways to really thank our community and continue to have that engagement. So I thought that was a great meeting. So thank you, our superintendent, too, for hosting that meeting. The other thing I went to was the Ramsey County League of Local Governments annual dinner. And what I would say is that the programming was great. It was, it was great to see many people, and they were really happy about like acknowledging the election. So ABC was mentioned, so thank you. And the speaker was someone who is a Maplewood, Maplewood administrator, city administrator. And she did a, did a talk around how strength-based culture changed how the Maplewood City worked. And the strength-based platform that she's talking about, actually, I'm very familiar with. So it's something to think about. It's the Clifton, the Gallup Strength Finder. So it's the Gallup, they call it Clifton now, because Don Clifton was the, was the father of positivity. And I actually met him. I did a Gallup program for a week in Nebraska. They are from Nebraska. So I thought of you, my goodness. So Gallup is huge in polling, but they are also huge in talent management. So the idea of using the Strength Finder that is used across the globe, across all cultures, I had forgotten that it actually impacted how I view my own career, how I view, how I bring my strength to the table. So that might be something to think about.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's called Clifton Strength Finder. And oftentimes, you have people who are coaches who help you with that. But I, I can help a little bit with that too, so you don't have to pay for the coach. Yeah, yeah. This is about analyzing what, what, what does that mean, right? What does all those strengths mean and what does that mean to work together? It's never about labeling, but it's about what is the strength that we bring to the work that we do. So it's, it's fascinating that they are one of the few cities and she's one of the few, um, public kind of employee that actually have that background. Um, so it was fascinating for her to talk about and how everyone in the, in the Maplewood office have their strengths actually highlighted. And so as a group, they actually have a collective sense of what their strengths are. It was, it was fascinating.
For the learning work.
Yeah, would, yeah, we can talk, definitely talk more. It's, it's fascinating. It was fascinating. So I wanted to mention that. Yeah. So that's why I got.
Thank you.
And Melinda's also retired since she may have some time around the end of January. Um, I think I attended the Community Education Advisory Committee and Tad Hagan came and talked about adult learning center, um, things for that group. So it was a nice presentation. Also had the opportunity to meet with Principal Wade and a couple of the EDW staff just to check in and there keep continuing to learn about the CID program and things that are happening there. Um, in nine sixteen this week, it was mostly policy review. I haven't had a chance to check in yet with, um, Director Thomas, but they also indicated they had a new dashboard for member districts directors that talks about the waitlist. One of the things there, which is one of the things we've been asking about. So I'm excited to hear if that's there and will be helpful for us. Um, the last thing I will say is I had the pleasure last Friday, um, to go to junior team at Biz Town. Our Central Park fifth and sixth graders were there and I got to spend some time with their, there. And I would like to, although I know all of our teachers do wonderful jobs in getting things, but Carly Harris, one of our fifth and sixth grade combination teachers there, were able to secure many free and reduced price field trips this year. And that's one of the things there. Cause some of our students had asked to go again and it was a really fun time. Some of the parents volunteered, got to interact a lot with the fifth and sixth graders. It was a great time, great opportunity for our students. So, yeah.
Very cool.
Uh, I had the pleasure to attend on December second this year's MSBA delegate assembly, which to remind everyone, this is where delegates representing all the school districts across the state gather to vote on and decide what we're gonna lobby the legislature to do this year. And, uh, it was interesting. It was another animated session. Um, there were twenty three total resolutions that we voted on, sixteen passed. Um, some of the animation was, there were, uh, several resolutions that were aimed at, uh, at charter schools. And things like eliminating new charter schools, uh, forcing charter schools to be at higher standards, blah, 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 blah. A lot of things that particularly, uh, the St. Cloud District and other some outstate districts, apparently they're facing a lot of, uh, competition from charter schools. And so they proposed these resolutions to get the regi- legislature to basically kind of limit what charter schools can do. But a lot of them, you know, they were like two-edged swords. And if, if, you know, one was, you know, if they're not performing to certain standards and they should be shut down and defunded. Well, what if one of the public schools isn't performing to standards, you know? So plus many of those charter schools are, uh, in the urban area are designed to help kids who are having trouble with certain things. And so is it fair or not? So those were all pretty much defeated by, by a big, large majority. Uh, another area that was pretty contentious, there were a number of resolutions from some smaller rural schools around things like legislature mandating that schools adopt FCC, federal communication, um, uh, or similar, uh, standards regarding obscenity and profanity. And it was a way to kind of back end to allow or force banning of books or not having books. Cause you know, the theory being, well, if you can't say it on TV or the radio, it shouldn't be in a book. Well, there's a little unreality there because I'm not sure you can't say anything on the TV or the radio today. Um, and that was kind of soundly beat down. Uh, but it's, there's a voice out there with some of the schools and some of the school districts that have new members that had delegates there that were interested in that kind of direction. Uh, another one was, um, a proposition to, for the legislature to classify students experiencing, uh, gender transition or transgender or gender dysphoria as, um, a disability. Uh, that was, that, there was some shouting around that one. So it was very interesting, again, that the, the vast majority of delegates, uh, were against, how could you even bring that to this body, uh, which was interesting to me. A couple of ones that are worth noting that are pre- pretty good. Uh, again, for those listening, this does not mean it's gonna happen. It just means the School Board Association goes to the legislature and says, hey, we all think you should do this. Uh, one was lifting the cap on LTFM funding, which would allow for, you know, more spending. Um, one was, uh, fully funding the, uh, uh, reading training programs that are mandated by the Read Act. But not only doing it, but making it retroactive to January of twenty twenty-two, I believe. So that districts like ours, who were ahead of the game, can get retroactively reimbursed for putting these programs in place like our letters program. So we're not like penalized for being first out of the gate on this kind of thing. Um, the last one I'll bring up, that again, I think we've talked about it in various forums, is the, uh, the testing, MCA testing. And as we've noted, you know, it's an opt-out, opt-in, right? So not all kids take it, but not only that, the way that the scores are calculated is that if you have a number of kids that are eligible, those kids who opt out are scored as a zero. Right? And so it brings down the entire, the entire number. So it's stupid in two ways. Well, I didn't say stupid. I'll say it is, um, mathematically inaccurate
Yeah.
uh, to, to be able to use as a real indicator of, of student or school progress in two dimensions. One, just it's an opt-in, opt-out. So there's gonna be bias in who takes the test and who doesn't. And then secondly, if you don't take the test, your score is a zero. So the resolution is to urge the legislature to at least allow schools and to not count the non-takers as zeros. Just, just don't include them in the denominator. Why would you do that? So at least it'll be a fair representation of the scores of who actually took the test. So it was interesting, you know, half day, uh, gathering of different people from around the state. And, um, you know, there were a lot, you could tell there were a lot of urban rural stuff, you know? One was like, you know, urge the legislature to immediately classify fifteen passenger buses as class three vehicles. Okay, fine, sure. I don't, you know, in the rural areas, that means something. I didn't even know what it meant, so I just voted for it. So, but it was, it was a fun day and, uh, I think I'll, I think I'm next year too. I think it was a two, it's a two-year term and we just upped for it, right? So, uh, I'll look forward to that a year from now. But related to that, as we all know, there's a day at the Capitol in, after the first year. April, May, March, I forget when, whatever it is. Yeah. So that's when many school districts will go to the Capitol. These resolutions in hand and start, you know, lobbying our, our representatives to kind of take action on them and do something with them. So. Again, just part of what we do in terms of advocacy, you know, at the state level to try and get stuff changed for the better. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for representing us.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and just, just for the record, yes, well, there, there's that day at the Capitol. Um, Association of Metropolitan School Districts will also have a day at the Capitol. And they always seem to do it within a week of each other. So, you know, there's that. Um, but it is, um, definitely worthy, worth going to and, uh, we'll see how that works. All right. So, um, for me personally, um, I was, I was out at the, the previous meeting and, uh, so just wanted to take an opportunity to, to thank you for, uh, keeping things going. Um, uh, the point of personal privilege, I was, um, in, uh, Lincoln, Nebraska, um, watching, uh, my kid's senior recital. So, uh, Charlie graduated from Roseville Area High School, um, in twenty twenty. And, um, this is their senior year and wants to be a teacher. And, uh, will be spending their spring semester, um, uh, student teaching. So, um, looking forward to that. Um, the, I, I went to a number of, oddly enough, different musical, um, uh, events here. This is kind of the season for, like, every, every other day, there is something going on at, uh, Roseville High School. So I'm just gonna put that aside for a second, cause, um, I guess be here for the next, um, twenty minutes talking about those. So, um, I'll stick to two things. Number one, um, going back to Minnesota School Board Association, we do, uh, as school board members, we have to, we, we don't have to, but we really should and we do, um, believe that continued learning is, is a good thing. And so, um, uh, most of all, or all of us are signed up, um, for the Leadership Conference in, uh, January. And then there's a number of, like, all through the year, there are just different things that Minnesota School Board Association, provides for, uh, school board members, should they choose so. This January, um, uh, Director Kitty Goggins will again receive another award from Minnesota School Board Association. Um, and just rightfully so. Um, it's the President's Award. And it is for those who have earned three hundred points or more from MSBA training programs. And I must tell you, that is not an easy thing to do. That is, you have to be very, um, deliberate in the number of classes that you're taking, um, to be able to do that. So I'd like to use my, 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 my time to thank Kitty Goggins for consistently showing, um, this school board and school boards across the state, you know, what it means to be a great director. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, the thing I will say is that, another thing I'm gonna say is, is, is that, um, when you talk to us in person, um, for the most part, we are very, we are very, um, humble people. We do not like talking about ourselves. Okay, that's just a thing. I don't know what it is. It just, you know, I know. It's like everyone, we don't like talking about ourselves. Okay. I don't mind talking about other people though. So, um, the last thing I'd like to bring up is that Dr. Chu.
Oh, no. Okay, what did I do?
I know. And I, and on the beginning of the day, it's like, okay, well, what, what new thing? What, okay, but the, the new thing that I know about today, okay, the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development has announced a new class of exceptional educators into its twenty twenty-three Champions in Education Program. And I think they made some, made a really good decision. Um, the ASCD is committed to supporting mid to late career educators. Um, and through this program, uh, they're building community of education influencers who are crafting their own legacies for the impact they have on education. And Dr. Rose Chu for, but in case you haven't heard, okay, Elevate Teaching, look it up. It's a really cool thing. And the brainchild is Dr. Rose Chu. So, congratulations, Rose. Like, once again. Okay. It's like, this is what you get for not sharing. All right. In that case, I am going to kick it back to you.
Thank you. Good evening. As we approach the final weeks remaining in the year twenty twenty-three, I've been reflecting upon what it means in the world of education to do your best. I think for students, it can be quite clear to truly keep your hearts and minds open to being curious learners and to also treat others as you would want to be treated and how they would want to be treated. I think for educators, it's always not just that clear. I know we always aim to also keep our hearts and minds open and keep the best interest of all learners in the forefront of our work. We aim to continually balance the need for individual and group instruction, required curriculum and standards, the safety within our schools, the needed social and emotional engagement of all students, language access, the monitoring of necessary individualized student education plans, and that's just the start. Amidst the demands of a role of an educator, most certainly in the classroom, we also aim to remain positive in challenging situations while sharing a sense of humor along with being great storytellers. Above all, we aim to honor and develop high-quality relationships with all students and families. I share this reflection tonight as this is a reminder for our community that all educators deserve an abundance of gratitude as we head into this well-deserved winter break beginning next Friday. Finally, in return, I'd also like to share my thanks for the wonderful support of our beautiful Roseville Area Schools community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there's nothing left on our agenda, so please stand adjourned.